And I have a motion to move the City Property and Claims Committee to go into executive session for a briefing by city solicitor Lauren Galvin regarding current litigation.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to then invite all the council members, the city clerks, solicitor Galvin and council assistants to executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we shall resume to the executive session. Thank you. All right.
Counselor Blair and Counselor Holmes.
Point of order, Madam Chair, just be sure to announce that there were no votes taken in executive session.
Okay, for those that you may have been listening earlier in the night, we went into executive session on the City Property and Claims Committee, and we did not take any executive votes. There were no votes taken at that meeting, and now we are back into the City Property and Claims Regular Committee Meeting. So, from the docket of April 17th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $1,743.41 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account 16101000-542020, Library Supplies of Equipment, regarding the need for funds to upgrade the outside security camera at the Attleboro Public Library. Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns regarding that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, the donation of $40 in Stop &amp; Shop gift certificates from Lori Scales to the Veterans Department. The donation was given in honor of Gus's random act of kindness to celebrate World Down Syndrome Day on March 21st. Thank you. Any questions concerned regarding that? Okay, I do want to thank Lori Scales though for this. It's always great when our residents do stuff like this for others. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, the donation of $1,000 in Stop &amp; Shop gift certificates from the Attleboro Elks Lodge, number 1014, to the Veterans Department. Thank you, Peter. Again, any questions, concerns?
Just a comment. The Elks donate an awful lot of money to the vets.
They do.
For many reasons, and it seems like every couple of three weeks, we get something down there on them.
I think it's every time. Yeah, every other week when we go into committee, something is happening. It's really impressive how much they give to the vets.
They have a great, remember the vets. That's part of their, uh...
Thank you, Counselor. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to declare the fire department equipment of four obsolete LifePak 500 physio biphasic automatic external defibrillators as surplus and available for disposition. And that was a mouthful.
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions or concerns regarding that?
So, do they want this to go to Freiburg Rescue Service? Is that what...? They're hoping that it will be...
Used.
Like, so the city will just give it to them?
Yeah, they're going as surplus. I mean, they probably...I don't think they're selling them. I think they're giving them to them as a gift.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a number of things we do, Diana, like that. This doesn't meet our requirements, but there's so many small towns around that it's a help. It might not be the most up-to-date defibrillator, or...
Okay.
And they probably don't have any.
And they could...Sometimes you have the volunteer fire departments, too, and this is something that they could really use, which we could not because it doesn't fit certain regulations.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
It says Freiburg, Massachusetts. Freiburg, Maine.
I'm getting it.
They don't have it right in front of me. I'm sorry, Counselor.
If I may?
Yes.
So, the Freiburg Rescue provides EMS for the towns of Lovell, Freiburg, Stowe, and Brownfield, Maine. They provide EMS services for an area of 239 square miles with a year-round population of 6,930 people. Freiburg Rescue utilizes both paid and volunteer EMS providers to cover their service area. Because they cover such a large geographical area, it can take more than 30 minutes for an ambulance to arrive on the scene of a medical emergency. And in order to improve their ability to get AEDs to the scene of cardiac arrest in a timely manner, Freiburg Rescue wants to provide AEDs for some of their members to carry in their personal vehicles. By deploying AEDs in this manner, they can increase the survival rates of pre-hospital cardiac arrests in their coverage area. It is common for larger public safety agencies to donate their obsolete equipment to smaller departments that can still benefit from the equipment. I respectfully request that you seek Municipal Council approval, bladdity, bladdity, with this very nice donation to Freiburg Rescue Services.
And we thank you, Counselor Perico, for reading that out and finding it.
It was my pleasure.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, and that is all the business the City Property and Claims Committee has this evening. I would like to...Motion to close at 7:11. Second. And we are adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Traffic and transportation is canceled this evening.
Zonion Land Use is up next. He has a guest.
Good evening. I call the Zonion Land Use Committee to order at 7:12. Members of my committee are Counselor Hall, Counselor Delicio. The first item on the docket today is from the docket of April 17th. The mayor asked for us to schedule a presentation by DEP in Engineering Management Services concerning the capping of the Attleboro landfill. Mayor Harrow, if you would.
Thank you, Counselor Colas. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here with you today. I've invited DEP to talk about a proposal they have to cap the Attleboro landfill. This is something that has been a long time in the coming. Before leaving office, Mayor Dumas encouraged me to do this much sooner than later. You know, I've actually been looking at this issue for a number of years now in my capacity as a state representative, and we had constituents ask me to contact DEP to talk about some of the concerns they have. I contacted DEP a couple of years ago about the proposal that you're about to see. DEP eased any concerns that I had that were conveyed to me by constituents. We also have ABC Disposal from Bedford here, and they screen all of the materials that go into the material that would be used to cap the Attleboro landfill. And they make sure that nothing is going into the landfill or any of their materials that shouldn't be going in there. So, there are people who will say that this is adding contaminated waste to the landfill. That's not the case. not the case. I have no concerns about that at all. But this is a project that we need to get done much sooner than later. So, we have Mark Dakers...sorry, Dakers, I pronounced that right. Mark, from DEP, who's going to be giving the presentation. We also have Bob Cummings, who is an environmental engineer who flew out from California. He's here to, you know, show you what Recrete looks like. And we also have, I'm forgetting his first name, Kamara...Michael Kamara, that's it, Michael from ABC Disposal in Bedford, and Millie Garcia Serrano from DEP here as well. So, you know, basically, this is an information presentation to ease your concerns about what would happen in the Attleboro landfill, why it needs to happen, and, you know, just to take some questions about that. So, with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Mark Dakers from DEP to deliver his presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, is he gonna use that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, let me...
I apologize. I have...
It's on wheels.
Handout.
Sure, that'd be great.
It's always good to take notes.
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience?
Thank you.
Can you move it?
No, I wouldn't move it.
Okay.
Be careful, gentlemen. I wouldn't move it.
People know...
Counselor Blair, the handouts, I assume, are the same as what's...
They are, they're exactly the same.
Yeah. I think he does it. I mean, when we've done this before, he says, "Don't move it," so I...
Bear my face.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Well, good evening. My name is Mark Dakers. I am the Solid Waste Section Chief for Mass DEP for the Southeast Regional Office. I want to thank for the invitation to speak at tonight's meeting. I'm here to update the council on the status of the proposal for the closure of Phase B portion of the Attleboro landfill, located off Peckham Street in Attleboro, Mass. The closure proposal had been submitted to close the landfill in accordance with Massachusetts solid waste regulations that require all landfills be properly closed and monitored. The owner of the Attleboro landfill has submitted to Mass DEP a conceptual closure plan prepared by Envirocycle LLC to close the landfill following one of Mass DEP's policies called revised guidelines for closure activities. And the links to that is at the end of the document, and I'll give you that. I'll give you a little bit of history. Phase B of this landfill is one of many inactive landfills and dumping grounds that ceased operation that were never properly closed and monitored. The main concern with unlined landfills is the generation of leachate. Groundwater precipitation falls on the landfill, moves through the waste, picks up contaminants, goes through the soils underneath it. The landfill's unlined, there's no liner there. These are older landfills. That goes...those contaminants go into the groundwater. The groundwater then is impacted with contamination. It can discharge to surface waters, to wetlands, or if there happen to be private or public wells down gradient, it can affect the water quality. So, that's the main concern with unlined landfills. That's why we require they be capped. By capping a landfill, you reduce the amount of leachate by 99 percent. So, you go from tens of millions of gallons per year of leachate to tens of thousands of gallons, orders of magnitude. Properly capping a landfill is often referred to as closing. This closure proposal minimizes the amount of material to provide funding for the capping for the 10 acres of Phase B, and provides future monitoring and maintenance also for Phase A, which is 32 acres, which is capped and closed, but still needs money to monitor, as well as communicate...excuse me, community mitigation funds for Attleboro and Norton. Tonight, I'll present a summary of the Attleboro landfill history, the solid waste regulations, the revisions to the closure plan based on public comments received, and identifies the next steps in the...to close and cap the landfill. Little bit of a delay. Let's see if I'm doing this. I see it. Oh, there we go. We'll start with the...I want to go back one. Yeah, thank you. Attleboro landfill is a 55-acre site that was used for solid waste disposal since the early 1940s. The city of Attleboro operated as an open dump from 1940s to 1975. That was Phase B. From 1975 to 1995, Attleboro Landfill, Inc., sometimes called ALI, operated on 32 of the 52 acres, and that's called Phase A. The unlined Phase A was capped and properly closed in 2002. The capping of Phase B was subject to an administrative consent order executed in September 2001 by Mass DEP with the owner. ALI failed to cap Phase B by the deadline. In 2005, Mass DEP issued a unilateral administrative order and a penalty assessment notice to ALI to comply with the solid waste regulations. ALI appealed that order. The appeal has been stayed for some time while the parties have tried to resolve the issues, which include the proper closure of Phase B, funding mechanism of the closure. The owner has stated that he does not have the capability to pay for the closure. After review of its corporate records, Mass DEP has determined there were insufficient corporate funds to close and cap the Phase B area. The remaining funds that were left were directed to maintaining Phase A and continued groundwater monitoring. There we go. This is just a brief site plan. Shows Peckham Street on the left, Phase A, which is right in front of the landfill. The dark lines are the steep 3:1 slopes of the landfill. In the middle, it says Phase A. That's the 5 percent plateau area of the top of the landfill. And then in the back, we have the Phase B portion of the landfill in red. That's the 9.9 acres that is not properly capped and closed. And the way departments' regulations work in terms of liability is the current owner and operator, which is Attleboro Landfill, Inc., has liability under our regulations, and he has put a proposal to cap and close that landfill. If he does not have that proposal, the department can go back and look at previous owner and operators, the city being one of them. Standard final cover system. This is a slice through what we call our final cap. The top 12 inches, we have vegetative support layer, so the grass can grow to give a...control stormwater, protect the cap. We have a 12-inch sand drainage layer, and then we have to collect the stormwater. And then also, below that, we have the liner, or the sometimes a cap, is called geomembrane, which is a very thick piece of plastic, very strong, very impermeable. In combination with the drainage layer above it, prevents leachate from being generated. Below that is a 6-inch subgrade sand layer that's used to give the base for the membrane, and also to collect landfill gas. And below that would be approved grading and shaping materials, which can be contaminated soils. It could be...in this case, it is concrete and construction and demolition to be fined is being proposed to bring it to...the department has a requirement in its regs that any landfill, the top slope has to be 5 percent. The reason you want the slope is because the liner...if you have water ponding on the liner, it will...it'll...no matter how impermeable, you'll get more leachate will go through that. So, part of our design is we have a 5 percent minimum design in our regulations for all landfill final cover systems. In response to the unilateral order issued by DEP in 2005, ALI has submitted closure proposals to generate funds to cap the landfill and to do post-closure monitoring and maintenance. In 2004, ALI entered in some agreements with a previous company to close the landfill over a nine-year period. They developed several proposals, held community informational meetings. Those were...proposals were met with significant community opposition, primarily due to the number of trucks that were required to bring in the proposed volumes of soils to be used for shaping and grading. The last proposal was in 2012 by this company. It was 650,000 cubic yards is what they proposed to be in, roughly 1 million tons, would have raised Phase B to about 80 feet above the existing grade. So, that's the history. And then we come to the current project. December 2014, an owner representative of Envirocycle submitted a conceptual proposal that would close the remaining unlined portion of the landfill at the minimum 5 percent grade. All the previous proposals were much steeper, much larger volumes. They were 3:1 slopes, very steep. This was a 5 percent grade. Provide funding for the long-term maintenance and monitoring for the entire landfill, Phase A and B. The funds basically run out, so there's no money to do maintenance and monitoring for Phase B, which is capped, and facilitate a post-closure use for solar energy in the future. They're basically grading it at 5 percent to a southern slope, so if they want to do solar, it has the right angle, and it has the right slope to do that. December 2000 proposal was for 201,000 cubic yards of construction and demolition debris material with concrete to reshape and grade the landfill. The height was going to be 30 feet above the existing grades. It was going to take approximately 9,100 trucks to bring in that material. The average number of truck trips was estimated at 15 trucks a day, six days a week, for two years to do the grading and then to do the cap. The final cover system was estimated to take six months alone just to bring in the trucks, and that's regardless of the bringing in shaping and grading. Mixing of the concrete and the materials was to occur outside at the Attleboro landfill, and all truck traffic was proposed through Norton. Public informational session was held in March 2015 in Norton. DEP was there to answer questions. The proponent laid out his proposal. 30-day public comment period ensued, and that ended on April 30th, 2015. The proponent and Mass DEP reviewed the public comments on the proposal, and Mass DEP has incorporated the community's concerns and proponents' responses into this briefing here. Air quality impacts. The comments we received, they were concerned about the mixing and dust from the transport would pose a risk to the public. And they were concerned about the dust from the CND transport over the road would pose to the public. In response, the proponent has eliminated mixing at the site. Mixing of all the CND fines with concrete would be implemented at a construction and demolition debris processor. It's a Mass DEP permitted transfer station in New Bedford. The CND fines will be shipped.
CND?
Construction and demolition.
Thank you.
Stop using the acronyms.
No, no, no.
Nope, you need to. So, the construction and demolition refines would be shipped premixed with concrete, wet, in covered trucks, so there should be no dust. Traffic. Traffic has always been the biggest concern, having reviewed all these proposals and been involved in some of these proposals in the past. Concerns were public welfare impacts, noise, dust, vehicle emissions, and safety. The comments that we received were that the volume was too high, it was just too great. The distribution of the traffic impacts was not equitable. All the traffic through Norton was unfair, some of the comments. Attleboro should bear some of the burden. And road integrity was a concern. Union Road in Norton is narrow and in needs repair. In response, the amount of traffic associated with the delivery of Recrete has been reduced. It was originally 9,136 trucks for the shaping and grading material itself for the construction and demolition debris, with the Recrete and its down to 6,571. The amount of traffic is actually less than if you brought in clean soil to do the very bare minimum, 140,000 yards. If you just brought in clean sand, it would take more trucks than it would to do this, because the sand is so much heavier, 1.6 tons per cubic yard. You would need many more trucks to do that. Of course, you can't generate the revenue. It would cost you money. But just to give you some idea that the proposal is actually less trucks than a clean sand to get the 5 percent cap. The additional reduction the proponent got was really by changing the types of truck. We went from 100-yard containers that were going to send the construction and demolition debris container that was not mixed. We switched to now a wet mix, the trucks that can now pull the premixed material, so it's more material per truck, therefore, less trucks over the...to long term. The revised proposal is for five days a week. The previous proposal was six days a week. And that would be the same amount of trailers, 15 to 18 per day, for two years. If everything went perfect, it would be 400 days with the tonnage. We built in another 100 days to account for weather, and, you know, weather conditions in the winter where mixing may not be viable. And then you would need six months for final cover system. Based on feedback from both communities, traffic would come through Attleboro and out through Norton. So, they come in. The proposal to use one construction and demolition facility allows the scheduling of trucks, not typically allowed with other projects of this kind. Usually, other projects take soils, or they take it from multiple facilities that are generating construction and demolition debris fines. Coming from one particular project, you can sketch...you have much more control over the scheduling. So, you could avoid busiest time of the day. You can avoid school bus pickup and drop-off times. In the original proposal, the proponent agreed to reconstruct the road base and pave Union Road after construction in Norton. In response to the comments, and as a noise reduction measure, the proponent has agreed to do some grinding and limited paving in Union in the beginning to reduce the potential for noise from the trucks, with final reconstruction of Union Road after project. An additional mitigation has been posed for both communities, Community's concerns, Recrete is untested. The comments we got is that construction and demolition debris fines mixed with cement had not been used at any other Massachusetts landfill. The response was, is that you could tell from the review that some people interpreted the proposal was to use the construction and demolition material mixed with concrete as replacing Mass DEP standard cap, and that is not the case. Recrete would be below the final cover system in the drawing, so it would be below that high permeability, the low permeability layer, and therefore, leachate would not be generating. It's meant to provide the 5 percent grade, and also to generate the revenue to pay for the cap, which costs roughly $200,000 an acre. So, you're talking about a $2 million project just for the materials to do the cap alone, let alone the operating cost. CND fines, construction demolition debris fines are currently being used as alternative daily cover at line landfills, and have successfully been used as shaping and grading materials in projects like this. We've done ones. Mass DEP has approved projects in Marion and Stoughton, which have been completed and were successful in closing those unlined landfills. Cement has been used for centuries as building material. Recrete is a mixture of the two materials with known properties. Typically, CND construction and demolition material fines would be mixed with contaminated soils. You mix them with the soils to get a better base, and also to control hydrogen sulfide production, which I'll talk about in a minute. In this case, you would be adding a product, cement, to substitute for those contaminated soils. And you can add them in less amounts and get the same properties, or even better properties, than using contaminated soils. And cement is used in everyday construction. Hydrogen sulfide production. Some of the comments, commenters, were concerned about construction and demolition waste generating hydrogen sulfide during closure, and if not managed properly, construction and demolition waste can generate hydrogen sulfide gas. Short-term testing on Recrete revealed no hydrogen sulfide production at all. The microorganisms responsible for generating hydrogen sulfide require a sulfate source to produce hydrogen sulfide. Gypsum, which is one of the components in construction and demolition debris, is a sulfate source. Also, you need organic material. There is quite a bit of organic material in construction and demolition debris fines. You need anaerobic conditions without oxygen, and you need moisture. The organic material in the concrete is physically bound up in the concrete and is really not available for the bacteria. Studies and literature have showed that mixing concrete with construction and demolition waste retards hydrogen sulfide production. The concrete is alkaline and is not permeable to the water. So, all of these things make it very unlikely, and all the testing has shown that hydrogen sulfide gas production is unlikely. sulfide gas production is unlikely. Is, the department, being conservative as it is, still requires contingency plans for these projects for controlling hydrogen sulfide gas, including installing an active gas collection system in Phase B if it's necessary to address any gas production. Phase A has an active gas collection system that's collecting the gas, and they're flaring it to destroy the compounds. Mass DEP is requiring that a financial assurance mechanism, basically a bond, be set up for the active gas system in addition to the closure. So roughly a $2.5 million bond would be required for the cap and another $500,000 for 30 years of post-closure monitoring and maintenance. And so if the proponent doesn't, and that bond can only be accessed by the state. If the proponent does not complete the project, once he starts it and doesn't comply, then the department can access that bond and use the funds to mitigate any problems that are associated and cap the site.
Real quick question. What are any potential health risks of hydrogen sulfide?
Well, it's, the first one is it has a very low odor threshold, about .7 parts per billion, so it causes odors. You can think of rotten eggs, hydrogen sulfide rotten eggs, or basically marsh at low tide. At much higher concentrations, it has a toxic effect. It's flammable at 4%. We would, I've never seen it at concentrations that would be flammable at a landfill. I've seen it at concentrations in raw landfills that weren't managing the construction and demolition material properly in the landfill itself, at concentrations that would be a concern, but not in ambient air. I've seen it where it's really just been an odor issue or irritating. Some of the comments we heard were that Phase B of the landfill does not pose any immediate threat and that no action is needed. Phase B monitoring has not detected any conditions that present immediate threat, therefore no remediation at this time, and the project increases the risk from the site that doesn't pose a risk. We agree there is no imminent threat that requires immediate action to protect public health, safety, and the environment. If there was, we would have required it. There is nothing atypical about the environmental monitoring results associated with this landfill. No conditions justify unique response to close this landfill. However, the landfill is not in compliance with the solid waste regulations that require that it be capped with a standard final cover system. And as I previously mentioned, the main concern is leachate. Leachate generates, rainwater carpulates through this material, it goes into groundwater and can affect water resources down gradient, surface water, and wetlands, and wetlands of like this site. The other issue is stormwater runoff into surface water and wetlands. Right now, the waste is exposed in areas that is not covered, so stormwater falling on that is either just infiltrating into the ground, or if it grades are there, it would runoff into wetlands or to streams. You can't make the banks new waterways and the sediments in the wetlands. There are currently no stormwater structures or controls to prevent future impacts. Exposure to waste, if people were walking on the site or animals contacting waste, they're in direct exposure. The membrane eliminates that exposure. Capping it does that. Some commenters, I said, indicated that the project increases the risk from a site that does not pose a risk. This is really Mass DEP's response.
If I may, could you repeat that just one more time?
Some commenters, commenters stated that the project increases risk from a site that does not pose a risk.
Okay. I appreciate you repeating that, just because I have the expectation that, you know, even though we're, you're currently doing a phenomenal job addressing people's concerns, I expect that some of the previous concerns will be brought back up again, and so it's important for that to be stated emphatically, so thank you.
And this is Mass DEP's response to the question, because it's really our policy that allows this to happen, and the concentrations and types of materials. So at some point, I'm summarizing the proponents' response, but this is really Mass DEP's response. Mass DEP's policies for the use of soils, construction and demolition debris are set to allow for the reuse of soils and debris in landfill operations enclosure process while protecting public health and safety, and protecting any residents who live nearby. We engage in a very conservative risk assessment and risk management practices that confirm the nature and the concentrations of these soils. We have limits that we allow. We have certain materials that are tested, construction and demolition debris fines. Right now, the department, to use them at a landfill, you need a permit where you have to test those materials to reuse them. These facilities, all the, they're characterized, they have to meet the standard or they can't be used. So the department is well aware of, we allow materials that are going into an online landfill and being capped. We don't want to let materials that have the ability, that have strong abilities to leach. That would defeat the purposes. We'd be making this project worse. We don't do that. That is not our mission. The proposed project will provide also for a financial assurance mechanism, which is a bond for the post-closure for Phase A in addition to B. There is no money to do any continued monitoring for Phase A. Without continued maintenance and monitoring, Phase A may become more of an environmental concern than Phase B. The landfill's capped, it has to be maintained. If there's erosion, you could have slumping of the slope, or the final cover system can be damaged, and it's 100,000 an acre to repair. I'm sorry, $200,000 an acre to repair. In summary, the revised proposal, after public comments, the revisions were from six days a week to five days a week. Off-site mixing of the CND, construction, demolition, concrete, and water, so it will not occur at the landfill. All mixing will be at the permitted facility. Proposed traffic routes through Attleboro and Norton. The volume of the project has increased, and I'll talk about why exactly. It's 30,000 cubic yards to 231,000 cubic yards to generate additional mitigation requested by the town and the city. The schedule has been revised from six days a week to five days a week, no weekends. The number of truck trips to move the 230,000 cubic yards has been reduced from 9,100 approximately to 6,571 trucks just to move the recrete. That's roughly, if you go back to the previous consultant, that's about one-sixth of the traffic for that proposal, which is 47,000 truck trips. The maximum height of grading and shaping in Phase B would be about four to six foot higher to get that additional 30,000 yards, and that's solely to pay for the mitigation for Norton and Attleboro. To give you some idea, Phase A of the landfill is about 100 feet above grade. It would be about 36 feet maximum. Landfill closure mitigation. The original proposal was a dollar per ton, or approximately with the increase in the size, 230,000 split between the city and the town, $115,000 each. In response to some of the discussions that the proponent had and DEP had regarding traffic, there was a roadway repair fund set up. One was $300,000 to the city of Attleboro for funds for repaving 8,500 linear feet of Bishop Pike and Peckham Street. And the town of Norton, $125,000 funds for repaving a 4,000 feet of Union Road. The 4,000 feet of Union Road was always part of the original proposal. The additional 300,000 was the amount that was added on because of the truck route. The routes were now in both towns. It makes sense to split the mitigation between both communities. Additionally, prior to the project, starting limited patching and some limited grinding and overlay, paving to correct existing surfaces that represent significant noises would be done. The DA wouldn't want it, you would do your main paving after the project's And then we have next steps. So Mass DEP has determined that the closure proposal meets its policy and can proceed to the next step in the process, which is solid waste permitting. Mass DEP would post the response to comments on its webpage. We would execute an administrative consent order with the owner, EnviroCycle, with a schedule for normal solid waste permitting, which will provide the communities with additional opportunities for public comment. There would be a, the main one is the corrective action design permit, has a 21-day public comment period. The department issues, reviews it, issues a draft decision, puts it out for public comment. We review the comments. We either approve, modify, or deny that based on the comments and issue a final decision on the project. One other thing that would happen pretty quickly, too, is we would get a site assessment scope of work permit. That would be to do some additional assessment for Phase B, put some more monitoring wells, collect surface water and sediment samples for Phase B to supplement the existing monitoring network that's out there for Phase A. Last slide is my contact information and resources. There's, the first one is Mass DEP's webpage for the Attleboro cap and project. That has all the historical information that I've talked about. What it doesn't have is the response to comments or a consent order. That is not up on the webpage yet. And then the policy that we're following is the revised guidelines for determining closure activities. That's the policy that was referenced, and that's on Mass DEP's webpage also. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I see a number of questions, but if we could start with, can you confirm what the cost will be to the city and town? Is that 230K total with 115 to Austin to Norton?
In terms of mitigation? What, what, these aren't costs.
The mitigation fund.
Right. This would be, what the department does is, we realize that there is impact to the communities from closing these landfills, and some of these have not been active for a while. So we allow, in the proposal, we do a financial analysis, and we allow no more than is needed to pay for the closure and also provide some mitigation. So the department allows that to go in and write, the actual how that will be done will be between the proponent and the city in Norton. They'll have to work out their arrangement, how they're going to do that. But the project has the capacity and is built in for this. And for this particular project, there was a dollar per ton to be split between the two communities, so $230,000, $115 each. So $115 to Norton, $115 to Attleboro. There would be another 300,000 for City of Attleboro, which was going to be allocated for funding a paving of 8,500 linear feet of Bishop Pike and Peckham. But it's really up to the community how they want to use that money, and they can agree to work with the proponent on that piece. But this is what we, we try to look for, a nexus between the project and where you have the mitigation. But it's up to the city and to the proponent to work out those details. The department has provided for that in the project, so the funding is there.
Good evening. My name is Millie Garcia Serrano, Mass DEP. From the perspective of cost to the city or town, basically, Mass DEP is here to facilitate the closure. Mass DEP is also here to provide some oversight with regards to the FAM. All those pieces are actually entered into between the project proponent and the property owner, i.e. the potential responsible party. There is no cost to the town or the city as of now, because we have a party that's willing and apparently able to perform the response action. So I just wanted to ask that, answer that question directly.
Perfect. Thank you. And that's because they're using the recrete, correct?
Well, they have stepped forward to perform response actions.
Okay.
Right now, the city nor the town is on an administrative consent order with the necessary requirements to perform the response action. If that party fails to perform the response action, then we look, it's almost like a lineage issue, then we look further, deeper to see who would be the party, as Mark described. It's based on owner, operator, and past liability, joint several liability. That's not what we're looking at right now. We have a party that's willing and able to perform response actions, and we're simply facilitating. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also settling department's general order and appeal that's been out there. That is, the department requires the landfill to be closed. That is our, when we have a proposal, proponent that is willing to come forward with a proposal to cap the landfill, we look at it, we, and if it meets our minimum requirements, we take it to public comment information session, which is what happened previously, and then we require the proponent respond and revise the project. And this one has been revised. This is, one thing I would say, this is the only 5% closure I'm aware of. Most closures, and it's the unique cost structure, and the proponent is providing where he's taking a commodity at typically, which is concrete, and using it with construction and demolition debris fines. Typically, you have, as the previous proposals were, much larger materials.
Eighty foot.
Three-to-one slope, 80-foot mound, you know, three, you know, twice the tonnage rate per day, and twice, you know, and six times the trucks. So this is the only one I've seen. It's some unique circumstances that provide that, so it has some advantages over the previous projects, especially traffic.
What are those unique circumstances? Is it just because it's been, has it received any waste since 1975, or?
No, it's more the, what the proponent is proposing to use. He's proposing to use, we had discussions with the EnviroCycle. Yeah, actually, this may be a good cue, if you don't mind.
So we'll go through a couple questions, and I know Mayor Harrow's been raising his hand. Sorry.
What I was going to ask is, do you want to see the materials that would be entering the landfill, because Bob Coings, an environmental engineer, has the materials with him. So if you wanted to see those.
Just a point of order. Just to help Mr. Cobus out just a little bit.
Glad.
It would be proper, this is your meeting, you run the meeting, you call on who you need to call on, and President Cooper's been waving a flag over there for a little bit before we move on to the materials.
I think Council Jackson actually was before me, and the only reason I know that is because I'm looking right at her.
And I'm giving you.
Yes.
So I think, I think at this point, before too many questions come up for the gentleman from DEP, we ought to ask him and then move on to what the, what the material will be used. My, it's a quick comment. Council Jackson, it's just that, would you kindly send by email the presentation that you presented? It wasn't exactly, there were some comments that you made from your presentation that were not in the material. They were minor, but I want the presentation that you gave to the council to be on the record. So if you could do that, that's my only comment at this point.
Do you have my speaking notes, or?
No, the presentation.
Difference between this?
Yes, there's some slight, slight differences between what was shown to the public versus what was given to the council. They're very slight, but if you could provide that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Perfect.
That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Jackson.
Thank you. Council Cobus. Mark, hi.
Hi.
My heart was racing when you're going through all this, until we got to the revised conceptual plan. I sat in on a lot, a lot of meetings, and I think the last one they actually had was the town, the selectman from Norton, town administrator, Representative Pori, Representative Hawett, Senator Timmeltie, myself, because I'm the Ward Four, city councilor. I think the last one was like two years ago, and this is exactly how it ended. It is, it's the, they talked about the off-site mixing. Norton was happy, Attleboro was happy. But I do have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So are they still thinking of coming down 118, or turning onto Bishop Street, and turning on to?
Yes, the, yes.
Peckham? Okay.
Then I'm looking for my notes that have the exact route, and I just want to read off it, so I don't, if you, so it's coming, so the facility, and I actually.
It's in Spartan, right?
Yes, exactly. I think actually that got skipped over going through the process. There we go. So this is, I mean, this is a large scale. The facility is down, that's be generating the construction and demolition debris fines, is in New Bedford off 195. That would be coming off 195, traveling west on 195 to Route 118 into Attleboro, turning right on Bishop, right on Pike, right on Peckham Street to the site. And then outbound, you'd be traveling easterly on Peckham, which turns into Union Road, and then in Norton. Then you turn right on South Worcester, which merges with John Scott Boulevard, which changes to Eddie Street, then right under 140, left under Harvey Street, through the Taunton Industrial Park, left on Bay Road to 495, and then down 24, all the way back to New Bedford.
That was, and I'm glad to hear that, because it was nice when they were discussing it at the last meeting that I attended, and like I said, I think it was a good two years ago.
It was. This project.
It's a long time coming, this is. But they were all, both in agreement, both the city and the town of Norton were in agreement. So it's good to hear that. And they did reduce it to five days, which I know which was one of the big concerns that they had.
Yes.
But one of the other concerns was because of, and I know you mentioned it briefly, but the bus drop-off and pickup, that was a big concern, especially down on, oh my gosh, on Peckham Street, where Peckham and Pike Ave come in, because there's a, and I know.
Yes.
Because there's a, and I know, I know the chief of police was in the meetings, and he was very concerned about, you know, turning, the radius turning on to Pike Ave, also the radius turning on to Bishop Street. They talked about putting at that corner where there's a ball field. I know you'll probably have to go through all that when you go through the permitting process, you'll have to address it at that point.
I've driven all the roads several times. The, one of the things the proponent was saying is the unique ability to schedule. So one of the things was, is that the towns want to schedule around the bus schedules, we can do that.
Beautiful.
So that was one of the things that was done. That would mean, you know, it might be four or five trucks, and it would come at once, and then stuff to get the 10 to 15, you know, you really need to average about 15 trucks a day to get them in, but you could go around the schools. Having, that's the one other thing that's a little bit unique about this project. It's all coming from one location. Usually, it's coming from multiple locations, all north, south, east, and west, and that makes it a much harder to control the traffic. It is something, the traffic plan, the, there would be a committee, my understanding, would be set up within the town of Norton would have, and they can refine the plan. We would, this plan would get people, will get another opportunity to comment on it when the corrective action design permit is submitted for department review and for public review. People get to look at the permit, department will ask questions. We always have questions. It's, it's not going to likely get approved coming in as is. We always have comments and questions on the technical side. This was the conceptual plan. When it comes in the detail plan, it'll have engineering drawings, details for stormwater controls, the conservation agents will want to look at that. We'll have details for keeping the dust and other materials and mud from going onto the roads, and we'll have details for the traffic plan and rules, speed limits set that they have to follow. You've got one set of drivers going, they're going to have to go 20 miles an hour from, as soon as they make that right off 118 until they go out on to Norton, onto South Wister. So that would be the rules that they would follow, 20 miles an hour. That's part of the plan. That would be put up there.
Why does it take two years to get to this point?
Well, it's.
Because I'm not even kidding you, it was two years ago we sat, and this was all decided.
Yes, and I think some of the issues are that there was a lot of other proposals that did not get finalized. They did not, they failed. And the department sat with the proponent. We also had to set our own unilateral order and penalty agreement, which is a separate matter, because when we approve, if we, when we approve this, we settle that also. So there were some other matters that DEP had to work out with the proponent. But part of it was to make sure you get it right. There's been too many, we'd rather be, take a little longer and get it right than have a proposal that is not reflective of what every, that mitigates as much as we can.
So when, when do you propose that we can actually get moving on this?
Well, we would.
Like get going on the road?
We would put the, after this meeting, we would put the response to comments up on the webpage, and we would finalize the consent order with the parties and settle the unilateral order and penalty. Department would do a separate consent order, just between us and the previous owner, to settle that. And then it would be, there's a schedule in there. The applicant will probably submit a corrective action design, I don't know, within how many days?
Within a few weeks.
Few weeks. And then there would also.
So you're looking at 2020, 2019?
Oh, you'd be looking at 2019.
No, no.
I'm sorry, 2018. 2018. You'd be looking at permits.
You're looking at this year?
You'd be looking, yeah, we have 24 and 72-day comment periods, I mean, review periods, and if we, given how much time our engineers have looked at this, we, we do closure plans all the time. So the engineer, we would go through this process, review it. The engineer knows what he needs to submit, and we would go through the process of reviewing and making our permit decision. So you'd be looking at, if it's submitted, typical would be 90 to 120 days to get approval and be ready to operate. But then you have to put the infrastructure in, you have to get your hay bales, your silt fences, you have to do all that, all that has to happen. You have to put your financial assurance mechanism, the bond has to be in place before any material goes in.
So you're looking at.
Nothing goes in. He, that, and that'll be up to the proponent to get that in place. The department approval will say, you can start, and you got to do A, B, C, D, and if he gets all those in place, he can start.
And I know there were a number of questions. Council Holmes?
Thanks for coming in. I have a few questions. So Stoughton and Marion, when did those projects finish?
Stoughton, I want to say, I think that was maybe three or four years ago. The closure certification was submitted and approved for that. That was done in a couple of phases. That took, and then Marion was probably a good, I think I want to say 12 or 15 years ago.
12 or 15?
Yeah. Since then, I mean, one of the things I recall, and I said in previous meetings that I've done with this, is we've looked at the groundwater quality from the Marion especially. Their consultant submitted a request to reduce the monitoring frequency based on the results, and the cap does what it's supposed to do. The contamination levels fell, so the frequency of the monitoring could fall. So we saw what we wanted to see, we, we expected to see, and that's what's supposed to happen.
So this system that you're using is almost 15 years old, and this is the most current, this RECRE, this is the system that's the most.
Well, the final cover system is, Mass DEP's solid waste regulations require this kind of final cover system for every landfill. But the RECRE is really, is the grading material. The other landfills, Marion and Stoughton, they took contaminated soils, and they took construction and demolition debris fines, which are generated from demo projects from, and they go to a facility and are processed, and they're unrecyclable fraction. Those, that's, this is different. This has not been proposed anywhere. But the same, the difference is, is that they're mixing this with concrete rather than with contaminated soils. Concrete, we know what it is, we use it for construction. I bought some, I had some delivered today to build a wall, so.
So this RECRE hasn't been used in the state?
No.
This would be the first time this would be used?
Right. But RECRE is just construction and demolition debris fines, which we've allowed in Marion and Stoughton, and, and, it's the same materials. One is a commodity, one is construction demolition debris fines. There's approval to use it at lots of landfills.
Okay.
They're using it right now.
Thank you. I have a couple of other questions. So the Phase A, the landfill gas production system, is that something that's checked frequently, or how, how does that exactly work?
It has an air quality permit in addition to the solid waste permit for the piping, and that has, as part of that system, it would be looked at, we would have more funds to make sure it's working properly. At one point, it was a gas-to-energy facility, so it was producing energy. There, there's turbines out there that were producing energy, selling it into the grid. The gas production has fallen. So now it is just flaring it, so to destroy the gas, instead of just letting it up into the atmosphere, the volatiles and the methane, flare, then it destroys 99.9% of all the volatiles, and it has an air permit. As part of this process, I'm sorry?
Would be to eliminate that, then, or?
No, no, it would, it would continue.
Okay.
You, the, having a flare, an active gas collection system is a very, it's a good, it gives you extra levels of protection, because if something does go wrong, say Phase B, we, we require contingency, not just here. Our, our revised guideline's saying you have to have a contingency for this if you take construction demolition debris fine, regardless of whether we think you're going to have. You still have to have the contingency. So they already have the flare, so that's great. We're still having the contingency that if they have to run all the piping to Phase B to collect to the flare, that, that be there.
Okay. And then my last question is, is that the, the risk assessment that's discussed in here, is this something that, can you, in the two years, what does it look like? Is it a daily process where they're making sure that everything is in order? Is it, is it a quarterly or monthly assessment that's done?
In terms of the, the quality of the material, or the landfill, the groundwater, surface water?
The whole project. Who's looking over it to make sure that it's going?
Oh, okay. There's a, professional engineer has to stamp and submit the plans, and will have to be out there inspecting and certifying that the materials meet. Also, the facility that's generating this already has a permit from DEP that says that they can use those fines, they have to test them. We're going to, that facility will need an approval from us to add additional equipment to do the mixing, and we'll put in additional testing requirements on the material to make sure for this project it meets the requirements. Because this is a little, this is unique, so we want to make sure it meets the requirements.
Thank you.
And then I had Councilor Conti, and then Councilor Hall, and then Mayor Harrow.
Thank you for being here, Mark. Mark, did you just come into the Lakeville office in 2012?
No. I was the, I came in as, I took over the job as section chief in that. I've been working in the Lakeville office, I think, since 1996 in solid waste section.
So I have just a few facts that I'd like to get clear. You stated that the Attleboro route was on 118 Bishop Street, Pike Street, and Peckham Street. That represents about how many miles of roads?
What was it, roughly 8,500 linear feet.
8,500 linear feet.
If you go from the landfill entrance back in Attleboro to the turn, and then it's 4,000 the other way in Norton approximately to go down Union. So we're talking 12,500 feet total.
My second question was, the approved grading and shaping materials, the RECRE, what is the comparable waste tipping fees to put that in a standard landfill?
Compared to, right now, it's, goes, it depends on what it goes in for. If it's going for alternative daily cover, I'll actually ask someone who generates it.
No, no.
No, no.
My question is, what does it cost to get rid of it now, if you need to get rid of it?
Probably anywhere from $40 to $60 a ton. It varies. The market is very, can fluctuate.
And has it fluctuated a lot recently? Is it likely to fluctuate a lot in the short term, in the two-year future?
It's hard to predict. One of the things is that may level it out is there's a lot of large transfer stations, rail facilities being built in Massachusetts as landfill capacity decreases. A large one just came on board in Taunton, and there's other ones that are in work.
What are they charging to dispose this?
Well, they're, they're shipping it to larger landfills in other states, and the cost for tipping is much lower if it goes out by rail. So that's, that has the pull, that's pulling the price down, where the cost in Massachusetts is going up as the, as the lined landfills that are closing.
So did I hear you say that the minimum yardage required to do a 5% grading on the, on acceptable grading per Massachusetts mandated law is 140,000 cubic feet?
If you look at, if you took that site for the 9.9 acres and just ran 5% from one end to the other, that would be about 140,000 cubic yards of this material.
And this plan that you're proposing is 650,000?
No, no, 230,000.
230,000.
And 30, and really, 25% of it is mitigation. So you're taking.
Now, you're proposing truck trips, well, to put, basically, put a truck on the road about every 20 minutes on this 8,500 linear feet. What is the weight of one of those trucks?
They can hold anywhere from 32 to 35 tons. The, the truck weight, they're going to have to be under the, you know, requirements for the road, and I think it's like, there's one that's 88,000, and I'm trying to remember the other one, if it's over 110 in terms of pound, 99? Yeah.
So the trucks have been away how much maximum?
Maximum probably 99.
99 tons?
No, no, the, on pounds, thousand, 99,000, so. And they would be hauling anywhere from 32 to 35 tons. So they're hauling.
Mark, what year?
About 70,000 pounds, and the truck weight is the rest.
The total weight of the truck is 99 tons, right?
Yes, yeah, with the weight, yeah.
That was my question.
99,000 pounds.
99,000 pounds.
Pounds, not tons.
99,000?
No.
No, no, no.
99,000 pounds.
Yeah, 48 tons.
48 tons.
48,000 pounds.
That's the question I wanted to hear, 48,000.
DOT does it in pounds, and then we look at the material in tons and how it's being moved.
What year did the Commonwealth of Massachusetts put out the unfunded mandate that the landfills needed to be capped?
Well, this, we required in 1991 that all online landfills be capped that were currently operating. This landfill ceased in 1975, and was originally, from 1975 to 1995, there was a landfill operating under the current regulatory requirements in the Phase A in the front of the site. The intention for the proponent, having gone through the history, is that they were going to get back to Phase B in the back and line it, or and cap it then. That proposal to expand the landfill never happened. And because that did not happen, that's why the department worked with the owner, and he was not coming forward. Eventually, we signed a consent order in 2001 to cap and close it. And, because it was, originally, it was going to be an expansion. It was going to be new landfills.
So essentially, the mandate came in 2001?
That's when we signed a consent order, that had to be, that he agreed, the owner agreed to cap. In 2002, there had to be some repairs, I mean, there were some repairs to Phase A. That took sufficient funds to repair the previously capped Phase A.
So as a result of the unfunded state mandate, with this 40-milliliter membrane since 1991, have any of those membranes failed?
Um, well, I, all I can say is by looking at landfill environmental monitoring data, because these aren't lined, so there's not like a liner underneath it where I can measure how much water is there. All I can do is I can look at the groundwater around it and look at the surface water and sediments. What we see is that capping the site reduces the contaminant levels down.
So in the Attleboro landfill, we currently do not have any alarming groundwater monitoring results?
We have exceedances of drinking water standards from the last rounds of data for low levels of vinyl chloride, and if, and arsenic are above the standards. Most of, because of the public water line came in and hooked up most of the private wells in the area as part of, but there are exceedances of drinking water standards in the groundwater near Phase A and on the edge of Phase B. They kind of overlap. It's almost impossible to distinguish between the two in the monitoring data.
But the water that is around the Attleboro landfill does not contribute to the Attleboro drinking water supply?
No.
The, does the site have any leachate measurements that are alarming?
The groundwater data shows not, nothing that requires an imminent hazard, we'd call it, or an immediate threat, but it's, it's typical of what you would see of an uncapped landfill for Phase B, and the trends show that the capped area is, the groundwater contamination levels are reducing with time, as we'd expect.
So are there sites that exist that were not landfills that would have a leachate measurement that's worse than what we have in Attleboro?
Oh, yes, there are. There are. It depends on what they took and the types of soils. The fact that Phase A, the majority of the site is capped, has improved the groundwater quality out there quite a bit. And there were, at one point back, some private wells on the site that had to, they had to stop using it because of the contamination levels.
In your response action plan, which I see as a business plan, you're allowing $300,000 for the repaving of the 8,500 feet of the Attleboro roads, whereas if you've got a 48-ton truck going over it every 20 minutes, there's a likelihood that simple repaving is not going to remedy that road. What is the opportunity for the city of Attleboro to increase that $300,000 roadway repair fund?
Well, and what I was saying is that the department has looked, and we, we, the city and the town, when we sat down about the traffic mitigation, and this is where the additional fund discussion came up, we said that we could allow additional mitigation given we're switching the towns. Right now, the project, there is, at some point, the project can't be the public works part for the, for the towns around it. So right now, about 25% of the whole project is for mitigation. That's about as much as the department is really comfortable with, and quite frankly, the proponent, and he can speak, I don't think, wants to, they want to complete the project in a, in a reasonable time. It's going to make the project longer. How the city uses the money, for what they want to use for, if they wanted to do not 8,500 and upgrade another part, you know, tear it down to the subgrade and redo it that way, they could do that. They could use the money how they see fit.
So my final question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So my final question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The dollar per ton tipping fee, is that a, is that the limit of the state cap? There's a state limit?
That's on active landfills, there is a host community fee that you're talking about. This is a closure. There is no mandated fee for this.
Don't you make this an active landfill when you start bringing material into the landfill?
We really restrict the types of materials. We would not-
But it's still going to a landfill?
Yes, it is.
And it is landfill material?
It's material that has to go in a landfill. The department has said it's acceptable for a project that's closing an unlined landfill, and it can't take nothing else except for these materials that meet these contaminant levels, and it cannot exceed-
So the city of Attleboro dollar per ton tipping fee doesn't apply to this?
No, it does not. The proponent is, it's tip, it's common that a proponent will understa-
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
My apologies.
It's common that a proponent will propose mitigation as part of the project.
So then, if we felt that the eighty-five hundred feet needed to be mitigated, we could increase that three hundred thousand dollar fee?
It's something that we had a discussion with back before, when we were having the traffic discussion with the two towns to figure out, and that, we, the department is really uncomfortable with the project going really more than twenty-five percent of the entire project, and really, now, the, the impacts of the whole project are jeopardy. We're concerned about that. So that is really what our concern is.
So in your discussions, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, in your discussions and leading to this update on the Attleboro landfill proposal, did your committee discuss putting a limit of a hundred and forty thousand cubic yards to the project?
No, we did not. We, as far as I recall, no. And actually, the base, the, if you did a hundred and forty thousand of the construction and demolition debris fines and the recrete, you would not meet the department's requirements to cover other costs like the financial assurance mechanism, some of the additional and the mitigation that was already proposed. The only difference in the five percent slope is that at the toe of the slope where it hits, it's gonna come up four to six feet, so you get a little berm, and then it's five percent. So that's how you get that additional, from going from a hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and thirty, is just putting a berm on the end, you get that whole lift, that entire length of distance. So that gives you a lo-
Well, frankly, Mark, your two-point-five million dollar bond sounds very light when you're talking about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars per acre to repair?
It, it's cost two hundred thousand dollars an acre for nine point nine acres. So that's how we get the two million dollars for the final cover system. And then we look at thirty years of post-closure monitoring maintenance, which is groundwater, surface water sample, landfill gas. That is for Phase A and for B. So the department's financial assurance requirements, we require it for the final, not for the operating cost of the project, but for the final cover system only, and for anything else that we believe is necessary, like the post-closure monitoring maintenance is mandated for the thirty years, and also, in this case, because they're taking materials that have the potential for landfill gas, generation H2 and hydrogen sulfide, we required additional financial assurance to cover that.
So I'll apologize to my fellow councilmen for saving so much time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing my line of questioning. Thank you, Mark, for being patient. I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Hall?
And I'm gonna really try to make this quick, and I apologize. I'm hearing a lot of things that, engineering questions about tonnage and things like that. I'm looking at this little diagram right here. Could you break this down in very, very simplistic terms so that the folks at home and myself could understand in very, very basic terms exactly what you're planning to do? So if you start, this is the contaminated level. Okay, thank you.
So what happens is, we have, if you go to the slide, and I'm trying to get back to that slide. Here we go. So what you have is, right now, you have solid waste that is in the ground on nine point nine acres of Phase A. And the department regulations say that the final cover system, the cap, has to have a five percent grade across it to promote drainage. That's to control the stormwater and prevent leachate from being generated. The cap works by having the slope. If it's flat, water, this, it can, it can get depressions, water will then penetrate, the cap won't do its job. So that's why we need the five percent. These are in the regulations. So all caps have to have this.
Does it have a cap now?
No. Phase A does, Phase B has nothing.
Gotcha, okay.
And so what you would do is you would take, the proposal is to take the recrete, which is concrete mixed with construction and demolition debris fines, bring it into the landfill, cover it, starting at one end, starting with like six feet and going up to thirty-six feet on the other end, five percent over the length of nine point nine acres will give you that grade. And when they get to that grade of, accepting two hundred and thirty thousand yards, they will then put in a gas venting layer above that, which is just sand, and, and to collect the gas. Above that, next, they will lay the membrane down, which is the cap that protects, keeps the groundwater from infiltrating in. It is very, very strong plastic, can take a lot of stress, and it's what the department has used for landfill final cover systems since the, really, the late eighties. Above that, you put twelve inches of clean sand that is used to collect the stormwater and also to protect the membrane from above, from the weather, from the sun, from animals, from all kinds of, protect it from freezing and thawing, minimize that. And then above the top twelve inches, you put a vegetative support layer, which is really just loam, and then you seed it, and typically with grass. And the idea is that by, you'll take up some of the stormwater by having a grass versus if you put gravel, you would just get all this runoff, you'd need bigger stormwater basins, you'd need larger, and it gives you a good wear surface to protect those layers so that cap isn't damaged.
So you're protecting from whatever's happening here down, if you would, not building up this way? So the building up is really just for stormwater management, if you would?
It's to get the five percent grades that the cap needs, and also to generate the revenue to pay for the cap and also for the mitigation. About a quarter of the project is mitigation.
Right. So you're just really trying to keep from what's underneath from coming up?
We're trying to keep the rain, the rain that's falling on this landfill from going into the ground and creating leachate, which is, is the rain goes through the waste, it pulls out the contaminants, and ends up going into the groundwater. If we put the membrane down, it takes nine, if it's done right, and that's what we have an engineer supervised to make sure it's done right, it's ninety-nine point nine.
So it basically flows off the top as opposed to-
And it's clean stormwater, which you can then discharge either into the ground directly, or if it's, if it was going to a wetland, you need to maintain that, that flow, it'll go to a wetland, but it's clean versus contaminated.
Thank you.
Counselor.
That's fine, but you also recognize Mayor Harrow after Ms. Hall, if you were keeping track. Sorry.
Mayor Harrow, so I, Bob?
Thanks so much. Just trying to keep my order.
I just wanted to, uh-
Save.
Very quickly, for a moment, ease some of the concerns that were raised. One of them is that we have a couple of samples of the C and D, the construction demolition fines, that you can, you know, hold and see, and, you know, you'll see it's not toxic material that some people have suggested. We also have a couple, three samples of the recrete, which is just this material mixed in. So, Bob, do you want to pass that around with the indulgence of the council, you know, and the chair? So if you're interested. And the recrete is in the plastic bag, but you can take it out of the plastic bag if you would.
Do we want to ask questions? Continue with the questions before we start that? So let's hold off on that.
Okay, so that's, that was one thing. Just to let you know, we actually have that here.
Thank you.
And the other one is to talk about Bishop Street and the eighty-eight hundred feet of land that, I'm sorry, roads that is gonna be traveled on, you know, coming down 118 and taking a right onto Bishop Street, taking a right onto Park and then a left onto Peckham. Something that was not mentioned, I don't know if it was mentioned, but the idea behind that is it's mostly right turns with the exception of taking a left onto Peckham Street. That doesn't interfere with traffic, but that's, that's one aspect. The other one is that I've just authorized the use of Chapter ninety funds to put a sidewalk in anticipation of this project, and because I like the idea of sidewalks in Ward Four, there are virtually no sidewalks in Ward Four, but put a sidewalk on the Fimberg Field side of Bishop Street running from Park Street all the way down to Pike Ave. So that will, you know, with the additional trucks that are going through there, that will actually make it so that it's a little bit of a safer route for people to travel on. So that's the second point. The third point is that while there is the twenty-five percent cap on, you know, the mitigation funds, there's also the use of Chapter ninety funds along any of the roads. So if by some chance this was not enough money to help restore the roads, you know, from any wear and dare, that could, wear and tear that could happen, you know, I'm committed to using Chapter ninety money to repair those. And we get about one point, as you guys know, we get about one point two million dollars in Chapter ninety funds every year, about that much. So, just wanted to offer those couple of points to ease some of the concerns that you may have, so.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like you have a couple of questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Please. For the, questions for the mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Peter?
Chapter ninety funds, what do you intend to, what is the cost of that sidewalk from Park Street to Pike Ave?
Yeah, well, I remember what it is off the top of my head, but I've already authorized it, you know, for that sidewalk. I don't remember exactly what it is off the top of my head, but it is one of the areas that we wanted to place sidewalks.
It's gotta be considerable, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's of that magnitude. You know, but that's a, it creates for, but this is Chapter ninety funds, and it creates for more safe, you know, we get it from the state, it creates for more safe-
I understand that.
-passageway, especially with Fimberg Field up the street. Another concern that I didn't mention is the, at the end of Ramblin' Road, there's gonna be the housing development that is going in. We're gonna have a lot of extra traffic going from the homes and the families from Ramblin' Road to Fimberg Field, and so that is something that, even without this project, it's a sidewalk on that side of the road is, you know, in the best interest of, you know, the foot traffic and pedestrian traffic that would go back and forth between, to Fimberg Field.
My only comment, Mayor, is Chapter ninety money doesn't come close to covering what we need to repair. The whole city.
That's right.
Is a hole. I mean, you're talking, I, I think you're underestimating a couple hundred thousand dollars to go between those two streets.
You know, it was, it was in the hundreds of thousands. I don't remember the exact number.
Well, I just don't know if we, if the city can afford to not take care of the rest of the city and dump that million dollars or so we get in Chapter ninety money on that one particular section.
It wouldn't be, it was, it's nowhere near a million dollars, that much. I mean, Mike Tyler, our DPW superintendent's already costed that out, and there are various roads, roads in South Attleboro that, you know, we're using Chapter ninety funds, you know, this year. You know, there's, I can share with you and the rest of the council where I've dedicated about a million dollars in Chapter ninety funds to, it was actually closer to eight hundred thousand or so, where that's going throughout the city. If you guys are interested in seeing that.
As traffic and transportation chair, I would love that.
Yeah, I mean, I have to show the chair to you guys. I mean, as you know, Chapter ninety is one of the very few things that I get to spend, any mayor gets to spend at his discretion, his or her discretion, and we have a plan, a study that's done that determines what's the best use of that money, and, you know, the roads that are in the worst condition, and also, you know, where it can also be applied to improve public safety, you know, by things like sidewalks.
The eighteen years I've been here, that, those have to be approved by the state. You have to apply to the state how you use them. It's not at your discretion where you use that Chapter ninety.
We get a, it's, at the point that I've gotten at where I'm gonna use the money, it's because all the projects that I had to choose from have already been approved by the state.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, though. I can't, you can't just spend Chapter money any which way you want, but the, before I see it, DPW has already done all that legwork to make sure that where the options I want, I have to choose from are, you know, in compliance with the state. Yeah, pre-approved, exactly. So another place is at the very end of Dexter Street, you know, where, you know, that's a very, you know, that's in really rough condition also, and there's a street in-
I'm sorry, this is, we're getting kind, I just want to stay focused on this.
Sure, sure. Okay, yeah, we got off on topic, so, very good.
At the, Council Blair?
Fine with me, sir.
Council Jackson, then-
Thank you very much.
Council Frekka, then Council Carti.
I welcome any and all sidewalks in Ward Four. Honestly, I mean, we have so many streets down in that area that are so narrow, but, and they'll never ever happen on the streets because they are so narrow. But just to forewarn you, when you just throw out Bishop Street like that, and I just had this discussion, because when they were talking about coming down Bishop Street, coming 118 and taking that right, there's a big concern about that corner. So you don't want to have a sidewalk put right, right from Park Street all the way down to have to tear it up, because they've talked about moving poles and putting up some big construction, I forget what they were gonna do, some big wall, just because the truck, when it does take that right-hand turn, it is very, very tight. So I would just advise you to keep that in mind when you just all of a sudden are gonna have sidewalks on Bishop Street. I welcome them. You want to put them anywhere in Ward Four? Great. But I, I just, I, I don't want us to have to have brand-new sidewalks put in, when we know this project is coming down the road, and you're just gonna make a heck of a mess of it, that's all. Just keep that in mind.
Yeah, point well taken. The sidewalk is going to be granite, not the asphalt berms. The granite is a lot more durable, and, you know, as you all know, when you're just driving-
Just a big truck like that, though.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
But it makes the point, though, of the trucks taking a right-hand turn onto Bishop Street by that Fimberg Field where you have a lot of people using that for recreation, it actually underscores the point of the importance of having a sidewalk there, you know, because that's the same road, the same side of the road that people are gonna be walking on, and it just, it makes for a safer, you know, sidewalks anywhere is gonna make for a safer pedestrian traffic. And this is something that it's only gonna be on that one side, on the right-hand side of the road. Even if this project was not going on, I would still place a very high priority on a sidewalk on Bishop Street on that side, in part because, one, Ward Four is underserved with sidewalks, that's one issue. Another one is that we have that housing complex that's going in at the end of Ramblin' Road, and there's gonna be a lot more people that are gonna be using that, so.
Council Frekka, then-
Thank you, Chairperson Cobus. I'm glad, I, I have a couple little things, and it's to honor the point of order, I'm grateful that you brought up the project on Ramblin' Road, because my email is blowing up already with trucks that are coming in and turning down roads and backing into driveways and things like that. So that's a project that's, that's gonna go on forever, and we're gonna add this one to it. So it would be my request that when the Committee for Transportation Concerns, I would, I would make the request that perhaps I'd be appointed to that, you know, be a participant in that committee, because the general populace of the municipal council, any traffic concerns, they come to me because that's my committee. So that would be very helpful. And perhaps I wasn't paying attention at the beginning of this, which I thought that I was. Who's paying for this project?
It's not the city of Attleboro, to be clear. So the materials are, and this actually, Bob, you might be, Bob might be better be answered, but to, from our point of view, the city of Attleboro is not taking anything of our operating budget or our bonding capacity to pay for this project. The closest thing we would do, using the money that we get, would be Chapter ninety money from the state to help subsidize the wear and tear on the roads, you know, to, up to the match that, you know, go beyond the twenty-five percent that is going to come down 118 onto Bishop Street. So if by some chance that twenty-five percent doesn't cover it, you know, I could use Chapter ninety money for that. So, but Bob, you want to go ahead and take that question?
Well, the fumble line.
If I could have a follow-up?
Yes, Roger.
That would be okay? So I just wanted to be crystal clear, because this is the conversation that we're having here tonight. People are gonna say, so we're gonna have to bond for two point, we just, you know, took a vote on a high school and we're bonded for this. We're, I know, I understand, I'm just trying to have our, the leader of the city make it very clear that, with the exception of the Chapter, potential use of Chapter ninety funds, capping this landfill that we've been dealing with for years and years and years will not cost the city of Attleboro a penny.
That's my understanding, that's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Council Carti? Mayor, has the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, or the contractor that came up with this business plan, this response action plan, presented you with a memorandum of understanding?
Not yet, we're not at that point yet.
Do you know whether or not one has been presented to Norton? Have you and Norton talked about this project?
I spoke with the town manager of Norton about, probably three weeks ago about this, asked him if he has any concerns about this whatsoever, and he said none whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Jackson, sure.
To Council Frekka's question to the mayor, as presented this evening, that's how it is. It can, it can potentially cost the city of Attleboro if it doesn't go the way that it's presented this evening. If the proprietor of the property, right, proprietor of the property, something happens and it changes, then the town of Norton and the city of Attleboro are required to take this over and pay for it. Am I correct? There's your answer.
We also have the two and a half, I'm sorry, the two and a half million dollar bond contingency, you know, and Bob, if you want a present? Yeah.
Any other questions for the mayor? All right. Thank you, Mayor Harrow. Is it the cops?
I can't believe this group is letting you come forward. I can't, I can't believe it.
I'm Bob Cummings, and I'm a partner in EnviroCycle, and I'll explain all of that, but can I work backwards with some of your questions while I still remember them?
Please identify yourself. Just give, I'm sorry, not that.
I thought I did. My name is Bob Cummings.
Where you from?
And I'm a partner in EnviroCycle.
And where is that?
EnviroCycle is based out of Massachusetts.
What town?
New Bedford.
And where do you live?
I live in California. I'll explain all of that stuff for you, trust me, you know?
Well, usually that's what we ask people when they approach the microphone.
Okay, cool, cool. So I was gonna work a little bit backwards to answer, to answer some questions while it's still fresh in my head, and do what I was gonna do for you. I got, first I gotta applaud you. You've sat through a lot of technical information, and you've absorbed it pretty well. Mark did an awesome job recapping sixteen years' worth of information, is the way to put it, that got us to today. I would like to just talk about the traffic plan while it's here. And the traffic plan, just so you know, we designed it, and I've worked with, it was the previous mayor, the town manager in Norton, and then we had a meeting about a year and a half ago, and God, it had department heads from both communities. We met here at City Hall. He might have been, I don't remember who was there, it was a weird time in my life, but we discussed it, and it's clear that to everyone, that the traffic plan is meant to be dynamic. In other words, it can change. If there's an event going on in either community that you wanna have the truck traffic scheduled differently, it's designed that we can do that on any particular day. Just give us some notice so that the trucks don't show up and, you know, we got a problem. But we can work through all those kinds of issues that you've raised, so we can schedule things so it accommodates both communities. I understand the issues with the schools, we're gonna try to work around school times and work through that. See, I already drew a blank on the next question, you know? You're right, that if this project, if, does not move forward, the city's on the hook to close the landfill, and I can explain a little bit of that. I'm very familiar with the landfill, and the way that I am familiar is that I've worked for different consulting companies. I'm a professional engineer. I've done that for forty some odd years, too many, and worked for Attleboro Landfill since 1975. I did the design and closure oversight on the Phase A area, and I understand what went on with the company and the owners of the company. Unfortunately, some bad things happened to the economy in the 2000s, and the fund that was set aside to close Phase B is not there. It went away in a, some investment fund or something, so there's no funds to do it. I brought different people to the table that were capable of doing it, if they were gonna use dirt, or dirt and CND fines and other materials, and that's the other proposals you saw for a lot more material to go in there, and it wasn't acceptable to the communities. Sometime around 2008, actually, 2005 to 2008 is when people started recognizing that CND fines contain gypsum, and some of the gypsum, when it was placed in the landfills improperly, resulted in creation of hydrogen sulfide gases. So myself and a friend, who's my partner in EnviroCycle, sat around one night, actually playing pool and sipping a beer, I'll be honest. He spent his whole life in the, his family was in ready-mixed concrete all their life. And I said, you know, what if, Paul, what if we found a way to mix the fines with Portland cement and make a cement, substitute the fines for the aggregate in the, in the concrete, okay? And I'll describe a little bit of that. What if, what if we can stabilize all that and make it work? Well, we did some testing, and we played around with it and found that it worked. We applied for a patent, the patent was approved in 2010 or 11. In the meantime, things went on in my life. My wife had some health issues, so we went off west where it was a little warmer, plus our daughter was there, so. And I followed what was going on here, and there was one last proposal that I think breathed its last gasp sometime in 2011 or 12. And I approached that person and said, are you done? He said, yes, I'm done. And I said, well, I've got an idea. Maybe we can close the landfill using the patented material that we have. So we approached DEP, talked to them about that, and that's how we ended up here today. We use a lot less material in that wedge that we're, we're using to pay for the, all of the stuff that everybody talked about tonight. It's gotta be paid for by somebody, and it's not me. I'm not, I can't take credit for it. We're putting the thing together, and actually, the gentleman that's gonna pay for it is sitting here. Mike Kamara owns and operates New Bedford Waste Services. They run a CND recycling facility in New Bedford, Massachusetts, and as part of their recycling operation right now, you correctly saw, they have to take their fines to a landfill somewhere to dispose of it. So they're paying somebody to take their fines. We worked an arrangement with, with Mr. Kamara, where he's gonna do some work at his plant to do some of the work that we'd normally do in the field to accommodate some of the residents' concerns. He's gonna mix the Portland cement, do what we need to do to prepare recrete, put it in his trucks and deliver it to the site, ready to just spread and compact. It'd be wet, it won't look like normal cement, you know, when the concrete truck rolls up and they start pumping it out. It looks kinda loose and gooey. This doesn't, we don't mix it this, that way. It looks more like a potter's clay when it's done. So you don't put too much water with it, you put it down and compact it, and it cures really well, and I'll show you. One of the things that I wanted to be able to do for you is to demystify some of the stuff. We're using this term, CND, and fines, and you're all going, well, I brought something with me. And I'm gonna describe what it is. I'll describe first. What happens when buildings today are either renovated or taken down, it's required that as much of the material that comes out be recycled as possible. So that's where CND recyclers came from, okay? And what they do is they'll put a roll-off container on a job site, people take down walls or whatever they're taking down, roofs, put it in the container, and it's brought to Mr. Kamara's site. Once that is building, it's inside a building, you know what, you'll get your handout. Mike brought a handout from a PowerPoint. He did a PowerPoint presentation to an organization just to show, and this shows the steps of what goes on through his plans. For your information, it's nothing secret, but basically, everything's unloaded on the floor, it's on a concrete floor inside a building, there's workers that run around and kinda look at what's there, take out the big stuff that can easily be recycled. They also spot check for things that don't belong, because they have a set of rules and regulations as to what is acceptable at their facility. So if they see somebody threw in a bucket full of paint, it's pulled off to the side, and they make a note of what truck it came off, or where it came from. So they talk to the contractor to put that bucket of paint in there, because that's not supposed to be there. It's just supposed to be building material. So those guys will do that, they pull out the big pieces, and then they put it through a shredder of sorts that breaks everything down to something less than 24 inches in any dimension. That's so that it can go up the conveyor, they've got magnetic separators that pull metals out, and then the rest of the stuff stays on a conveyor belt. It's all handpicked, there's laborers standing along the conveyor belt, and each guy's at a different, or person's at a different station. They might pull out clean wood, dirty wood, metal, cardboard, whatever, pull it out separate. The rest of the material continues down, down the conveyor, and some of it then is pretty fine. And what's left over is small, fine material. It's called CND fine. So it's not the material that actually came, you can touch it, it's okay. It's not the material that came off.
It's still the same.
It won't bite you, really. If you wanna sniff, it just smells like dirt.
Yeah, bloody dirt.
And if people, people saw me walking around with a baggie of stuff, and they're going, what's in there, dude?
Well, that's what I thought, that's what we thought when you started sitting there.
So, see, that's, that's CND fines. It's leftover. You see a lot of it, dirt, there's gypsum, there's bits and pieces of wood, might be a little, I saw in one of them, there's a little piece of cloth or something, you know, a little bit of paper, you know, some ceramic, that kinda stuff. And what we do, when we make recrete, is we substitute the CND fines for, when you make, when you make, let me back up, when you make concrete, what you do is you mix Portland cement, which is a, you know, it kinda brings everything together. It's almost like glue. When you wet it up, it cements everything. This is Portland cement. And they put cement with stone or sand to make concrete, and it binds it all together, and you get something hard. So we said, what if we substitute that for the sand and the stone and make some, some recrete? This is recrete. This is the nasty stuff we're gonna bring to the landfill. Sorry, folks, it's not nasty. I'm just kidding. But you can see, if you look at it, you can see in some of it, some of the wood or little bits of ceramic, and it's just embedded in the concrete. And that's what we're gonna use to create the wedge, but what it also does, because Mr. Kamara has to pay somebody to take those fines, that's gonna generate the money to pay for the project. So that's how it works. And the more the volume, or actually, the more the cost, the more volume we need. So you guys are saying, hey, let's spend more money on the road. Well, we weren't gonna spend 300,000 on the road, but, okay, we got DEP to give us a little more volume. And we've kinda reached the limit on what they can give us for volume, because quite honestly, if we got more volume, we'd do more road. It's all about the dollars. So that's recrete.
And the, the point behind doing that is to reduce the, to hopefully eliminate the hydrogen sulfide?
What happens in there, as Mark described, you know, bacteria is what produces the hydrogen sulfide. When the gypsum sits out, gets wet, it forms an environment where bacteria can start to eat the gypsum. Gypsum is calcium sulfate. The sulfur isn't digested so well by the bacteria, and they either burp it, or, I can't say anymore, goes the other way. And that's where this hydrogen sulfide gas comes from.
Because this is concrete, there isn't the ability for that bacteria.
Bacteria can't live in it. And the calcium sulfate is tied up with the calcium carbonate in the, in the concrete, and it's bonded together chemically.
And is this the same process that was done in Marion and Stoughton?
No, it's not, no. And everywhere else, and I'll say this to you, and from this point forward, and everywhere else in the Commonwealth, and at any other site than Attleboro, it'll be done with mixing dirt and CND fines. We didn't develop this product to be closing landfills, to be honest with you. Part of the reason we're there is it's an opportunity to demonstrate how good it works. When we started out in 2012 now, or 13, we needed a place to demonstrate. We're demonstrating it in Pennsylvania right now. We got an 800-acre coal mine we're closing, just regrading and filling. So we're continuing here because I've known Mr. Dumont, who owns the landfill, since 1975. Plain and simple, that's the only reason I'm still here. So we're gonna finish this project, and you won't see it be used at a landfill anywhere, because we have things in the works. Now, I can say this, in 12 to 18 months, you can go to Home Depot in Lowe's, maybe in Massachusetts if we get the permits, but you will go to a Home Depot in Lowe's, and you'll go to buy saccharate or quickcrete, and you'll see a bag alongside it that says, recrete. We've done a lot of experimental work in the last few years with processing that material further to, let's say, get it almost to a powder. And by mixing that with certain things, we can give the strength of saccharate, we can get the durability of saccharate. So instead of using it to fill a hole in the ground and sell it to somebody to put up a fence post or a mailbox, fix their sidewalk, so we won't be filling landfills. That's not our goal. But we'll do this one if everybody's in agreement.
Just a point, what if we could get back to the project and not his future business ventures?
Thank you. I do think it is interesting that, so this will be the only landfill?
This will be it.
Which is interesting. Do you have anything else, or are we ready for questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Council Hall?
So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure, okay, because you're saying, it's sounding to me like, okay, so this is the first one, like, we're the test project of this, and so I don't want it to come across like that, okay, because it's sounding like
No, no, you're not.
So please, so, so please explain that this is fantastic and true, and
We, we, we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars testing samples like that in the laboratory.
But no other landfill has been?
We're starting a project in Pennsylvania, we've got approval from the state, and the site's being prepared to restore an 800-acre coal mine. They're comfortable with what we're doing.
Got you. So somebody's standing
And that's in a coal mine, it's not in a landfill.
Got you. But so somebody is standing behind you and saying that we agree, this is going to work?
Yes, yes.
Who is that?
Yes.
Who is this? Who's that person?
The state of Pennsylvania.
Mass DEP.
Oh, here?
Mass DEP, they're standing behind the product and saying that, we know it's a, we know it's the first time it's been done, used, and we're gonna stand behind it, and it's gonna work.
We stated it meets our policy, and we believe we would not get to this project if we did not believe it had merit and met our imposed risks. And even if we believe in something, we still require laws to have that contingency.
Let me just add, let me just add to that one thing, one thing. In anywhere else in Massachusetts, mixing those CND fines with contaminated soil is acceptable. What we're doing is far superior to any of that, and we're putting a cap over the top of it when we're done.
Next, Council, go ahead.
Yes. I just want to clarify, Mass DEP is not a, an agency that endorses products. I think that's really important. We do not endorse recrete as per the company, or, we're basically looking for the constituents that comprise this material in itself, and I think that's where our technical engineering analysis goes in. So we do not endorse companies, that's not the Mass DEP role. We look at the data that comes in, we review its merits based on what's represented to us, and we basically use our science, engineering, and planning, and all those elements to make that determination. And again, the common theme between Stoughton and Marion and Attleboro as it stands with regards to the proposal is the CND fines are the ones that are being used, and it's a different base material. So we have contaminated soils, slightly contaminated soils that were mixed in with the CND fines for Stoughton and Marion. In this case, the CND fines would be mixed in with the recrete. So I just wanted to at least make sure that, that that's clarified.
That makes sense. Thank you very much. Council Carty?
Bob, I have a question. This, this process that is from New Bedford Waste Services LLC produces material to go into the truck to come to the Attleboro landfill. Does it do it in such a way that those, it's not clear to me, the, the state of the, of the material when it's ready to go on the road. So we're going through this plan, and we're getting into the recrete, ready to go into the truck to go to Attleboro. And we schedule eight trucks to operate, much like a train, to leave at the same time and to get to Attleboro at the same time, so that they did twice-a-day trips, eight in the morning, eight in the afternoon. And would, would that work logistically on the Attleboro site?
It could work. It could work fine. I don't know if it works for you. I don't know if it works for Mike, though. I don't know if he's got eight trucks ready. It may not work for Mike.
I'm concerned about it, it's solidifying in my truck.
You gotta get to the microphone.
Yeah.
We're hearing from Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I'd like to answer some questions after this, if I could. Can you explain the process a little bit?
Yes, sure. Any other questions for Mr. Cummings?
I don't really have a question.
Yes, Council Reynolds.
I don't really have a question, but I wanna thank you for your time, and I think that you gave a really great explanation of what your product is and how it works. I think I, I certainly feel comfortable with the process, and definitely how that particular product is gonna work. So I just thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. Click to, come up, and make sure you introduce yourself and your address.
I will. Good evening. Mike came in with ABC Disposal Services and Bedford Waste Services. ABC's been around for about 51 years now. We run about 150 trucks on the road every day. Bedford Waste's a little bit younger, 16-years-old. The purpose for building the facility is we wanted to be able to recycle as much construction and demolition debris as possible. So if you look at our diagram, and I apologize for that handout, I wanted to present something that I prepared for the town, but I was having a problem with my computer, and my techie guru was out of town, so, I apologize, I'm not, I'm not a techie, so. So in our process, we take construction demolition debris. I have a system of screens, I have magnets, I have a picking room. Our goal is to remove the materials that we can have markets for. We take out wood, we take out asphalt, brick, and concrete. Bring ferrous and non-ferrous metals, we're taking out cardboard. There's different rigid plastics as a market for that. We take out cloth. Sometimes we're getting requests for clothes, you know, and so we, we pull clothes out. The idea is to find as many markets as possible for this material before it's, it's sent to a landfill as a, as a, as a fines or a residual. When you talked early about the, the drywall issue, and I hear a lot of discussions about hydrogen sulfide, back in 2005, there were two major issues in the state, two closure projects, the Brockton landfill and the Springfield landfill, that had issues with hydrogen sulfide. Since that happened, we chose to be not, to be a responsible party for any of those issues anymore. So we do not send any drywall through our processing system. It just doesn't go through. We take out as much clean drywall as we can, that means it hasn't been painted, it comes from new construction, and then get that recycled. Everything else goes out to a different source, so we're not taking that material in. At the same time, we have people that check every load when it comes in. So what are they looking for? They're trained and, and, you know, and licensed to check for asbestos. We've trained them for, to look at the loads and make sure there's no hazardous waste, the loads are knocked down, and they're looking for those things, and if they find it, it's, it's loaded up and it goes back out again. We don't want it. At the same time, we have periodic training for our drivers, and drivers from companies that deliver to our facilities. We have this massive book with bags of every kind of asbestos you could think of. And the idea is, is to go to the job site and make sure that it's already been abated, make sure that they've addressed any issues with, with asbestos, and that's removed before it even comes into our, into our facility. And so they're looking for both friable and non-friable asbestos, and they get trained for that. One of the biggest things that we look for is making sure we're contracting, as far as people coming in, responsible companies. We want to have people that understand that we have rules and regulations at our facility, we're very fussy about the material that comes in. Our reputation is the most important thing in our, in our, our business today. And so that's why we make sure that we're doing it the right way. I think we exceed what most companies do because we take pride in what we do. And so wherever we've delivered materials to, we've never had issues or complaints or any violations as far as taking material to another facility and then having a problem with it. We also have radiation detection systems that, you know, are very, very sensitive to ensure that no radiation is coming into our facility. Somebody could be going through that kind of a treatment, they could, they could blow into a tissue, and, and those into a tissue, and it would set off the alarm. So it's a very, very sensitive system. The idea is we want to make sure that whatever comes into the property is, is a material that can be processed, recycled. If it's not, we don't want it. The idea is to have a nice, safe material. The, and again, the, the main part of our operation is to recycle, but as much as we recycle, there is going to be a, a material that's left over, and that's the idea. This is a great material for this type of process.
Counselor Carty, yes.
So I have two questions, and only two questions. I've already bored my fellow counsel so much, she left your meeting. She left your meeting. So I heard the ceiling was $40 to $60 incoming. That means a contractor has to get rid of some construction degree, he calls you, says, I want to send you these, these studs and this, this stuff, and you say, yes, I'll take it, and you say, I'm going to charge you $40 to $60 a cubic yard, a ton?
It's actually anywhere from $85 to $130 a ton to come in the door.
Eighty to 135.
Now, keep in mind-
A ton?
Yes. Keep in mind, we have about $9 million with equipment there that processes this material, that's just fixed equipment, we have rolling stock.
No, no, that's not where I'm going. Where I'm going is, what's the ceiling? Why not $140 a ton, or $150 a ton?
That's, that's just the market.
Okay, so, so if you went to $150 a ton, you'd get nothing in?
They, they'd probably go to a rail facility.
Probably go to a rail facility.
And take it out of state.
And then the eight-truck train that I mentioned earlier, what's the issue with that?
It's concrete. It's going to start to harden. We're probably not going to get it out of the truck. It'll start to solidify if I let it sit that long. As, don't forget, we're processing some material. It's a process, you know? We have a mixing system already, already built, and so as we add the concrete, add the water, it's going to mix and be, and be ready to go. It needs to get off the site and get to that site so it can be packed and compacted before it solidifies.
So if you sent your trucks out dry and put the water in at the landfill and mixed it at the landfill, that would not work?
Then you, then you're adding a lot of costs, and then we're going to add all, all the same mixing equipment has to go to the landfill. And I think that's going to create the dust that they consider. I can, I can mitigate the dust, because I have spray systems that can do it. But I think that was a concern that residents had, that they didn't want-
It was. Thank you, Mrs. Jones.
Counselor Holmes?
Well, I like how you're recycling, and I think that this is really innovative, so I do like that piece of it. Hopefully reducing landfills in the future, so we need to do something. That's my little comment.
Any other?
One last question, more for Mark. Is it possible to get an updated timeline with the next steps, updated through the chair, so we can be aware of it? Just so we know where we're at going forward?
Sure. I can do that as soon as soon. Give you that, sir.
Thank you. That was my question from an hour ago.
No further questions? Thank you very much.
You might card in case you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
So with that said, that ends, that was very informative. For a little while. I do have two other quick updates for the zoning and land use. Now that we're done with that. The, the first one is regarding the amendment to our RMD zoning ordinance. We received a ruling from the planning board, and they voted unanimously in the affirmative that, that this was acceptable. I was going to look to vote it out of committee tonight. I've decided not to because I'll be away next week for a family vacation, so I'm going to hold on to that. But I wanted to let you know that we did receive the, the ruling from the planning board. It was unanimous in the affirmative for that. Sitting on it for another two weeks is an, an issue because we have 90 days from the public, from the public hearing, and we're well within that timeframe. So that's the first thing. And the second item is regarding the draft ordinance for adult-use marijuana. I've reviewed the, the finalized regulations, I've updated the draft ordinance. I will get that out to everybody by the end of the week. I just want to go through it one more time. The changes are minimal from, from what was originally put out, but I will get that out to both the committee and the rest of the council by the end of this week. Any questions regarding that?
And just include the city solicitor in your distribution of that ordinance for her review. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The zoning and land use committee is adjourned at 9:03.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order at 9:03. I have two motions this evening. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer funds for approximately 38 road trench repairs throughout the city due to recent water breaks and other patchwork. Therefore, the mayor requests a transfer of $23,012 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to the following accounts. $16,532 to account 14201000-553010, Public Works Street Maintenance. $6,480 to account 14201000-530101, Public Works Professional Services.
Second.
Thank you ever so kindly. Please, both these motions came in last week from the mayor, and there are approximately 38 locations that have been reported around the city to the DPW, and they estimate that the cost to these roadway repairs would be approximately $16,532. This is going to be done with the hot, hot-mix asphalt. Obviously, they're going to need these details, so that includes, that is included in this request. Any comments? Hold on. Okay. There is one that I have.
So just a point of order, Counselor Jackson, I, because Counselor Perica and Dolan weren't here when you started the motion, they, they can't, I don't think they can vote, actually.
Unless we read.
What's that?
Unless we read.
Unless you do it again.
My voice is nice and raspy, I'll be happy to.
So I will withdraw my second of your-
You ever so kindly. So I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer funds for approximately 38 road trench repairs throughout the city due to the recent water breaks and other patchwork. Therefore, the mayor requests a transfer of $23,012 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to the following accounts. $16,532 to account 14201000-553010, Public Works Street Maintenance. And $6,480 to account 14201000-530101, Public Works Professional Services. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you ever so kindly. Any other comments? Please.
Yeah, my apologies for that. I was just asking, whatever.
Don't worry. Can we have a list of locations for those trenches?
You know, I can. Thank you. It will not keep me from, you know, supporting this measure and moving it forward through the committee, but if you could have it, that would, if I could have that at some point, that'd be great.
I would be more than happy to. I'll have it to you before our next meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
For both of you.
Thank you.
I'll count you in, too.
And I apologize, I thought I had enough time.
No worries. I should have looked. I should have looked.
We'll get back, it's okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Second motion, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $38,177 from account 6100-35900, Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, to account 6100-589065, Water Enterprise Fund Main Construction, regarding the need for funds for the Water Department installation of a new, is that a six-foot?
Six-inch.
Six-inch water main, thank you, on High Street. Two little things. Thank you very much. So the pipe that's on High Street, that's down underneath in High Street, that's a one-and-a-half-inch pipe. They're looking to do a six-inch pipe. In December, they ran into problems, all the residents over there, with their water table was much too low, and they didn't have any pressure. So they had to actually have a company come in and try and build up the pressure, so now, and that was only done temporarily. And that pipe, that one-and-a-half-inch pipe has been in there since the 1930s. It's a mess. So they just want to be able to fix this permanently for the residents of High Street. Right? Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. I have no further business this evening for the Public Works Committee, and I'd like to call for an adjournment at 9:07. Second?
So that might actually make it something, the increased water bill is going to be $62.
Oh, that's a good one. Thank you.
That's true. I'd like to call the capital improvements and city development committee to order at 9:05. We will be touring the South Attleboro Fire Station at nine o'clock on Saturday, followed by the Union Street Fire Station immediately following. Captain Perkins will be there to give us our guided tour of the issues that are in the capital improvement plan. I have generated a draft copy of a resolution for the mayor on the capital improvement program for all of you to see, but to my committee members, I would like for you to review this, Counselor Dolan, I know you have, and I appreciate the time you put into reviewing it, thank you very much. But we have a public hearing in one week, and that public hearing will close on the 17th unless something shocking comes up, which means immediately following, we have to come up with a vote to give to our fellow counselors on what we would recommend to the mayor for capital improvement programs. The issue that we have is that the urgent projects only in this capital improvement plan total nearly $17 million that's spent in 2019, in a city where there is only a $44-million debt reserve. So we can't do everything urgent next year. It's impossible. Well, it's possible, but we're not going to do it. So I want you to look at this resolution together with the book, because they go hand-in-hand. And if you see something in the resolution you don't fully understand, go back into the book and you'll find it, because it's there. And we're going to have to make some hard decisions on what we want to advise the mayor to put forth, based on our constituents, what are they asking for? So a couple of things stand out, and one thing in particular that you're not going to find in the capital book is the library. At the municipal building commission meeting last Wednesday night, which I attended, the library repairs are going to be $1.25 million. $1.25 million. And that's after the money that we've already voted, $150,000 for the design work. So you won't find on page two, the library exterior renovation, $1.25 million, in the book, because it's in an architectural plan sitting in the municipal building commission. Everything else is in there. So love to see you at the fire department, nine o'clock, South Attleboro. And if you have any questions, you can certainly contact me during the week. And does anyone have any questions about the resolution, or the process we're going to take in the next three weeks? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. All in favor? Aye. I declare the capital improvements city development meeting disbanded at 9:11.
Budget and appropriations is canceled tonight.
Public safety emergency was canceled tonight.
I'd like to call the license committee to order at 9:11. I have five motions from the docket of April 17, 2018. I entertain a motion to approve the application for a 2018 Hockers and Pedlers license from Robert S. Pelagi, Pelagi Brothers, 28 Delta Drive, Tucker, Rhode Island, 02860.
Second.
No issues with this vendor. Does anybody have any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the application for a 2018 Ring a Bell license from Robert S. Pelagi, Pelagi Brothers, 28 Delta Drive, Tucker, Rhode Island, 02860.
Second.
I really don't have any comments, same, same vendor. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the application for a 2018 Hockers and Pedlers license from Adam D. Pelagi, Pelagi Brothers, 28 Delta Drive, Tucker, Rhode Island, 02860.
Second.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the application for a 2018 Hockers and Pedlers license from Paul Piattelli, Dell's Lemonade, 33 Hope Street, Attleboro, Mass.
Second.
Any questions?
No, we just can't wait for the weather to get better, so we can enjoy that lemonade.
I know.
Yeah.
Actually, one of the ice cream places opened up recently, so that's a bonus. All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the application for a 2018 Ring- I entertain a motion to approve the application for a 2018 Ring a Bell license from Paul Piattelli, Dell Lemonade, 33 Hope Street, Ataboa, Mass.
Second.
Any questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to call for an adjournment for the license committee at 9:13.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd call the Personnel and Human Services Committee to order at 9:14. Committee members are Counselor, myself, Counsel Reynolds, and Counsel Blair. I have three motions. I entertain a motion from the docket of April 17, 2018. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $20,000 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Fund for Transfer, to account 11451000-517240, Treasury Medicare Tax, regarding the need for funds to pay the med tax for non-school and non-enterprise employees.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I entertain, from the docket of April 17, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $6,000 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Transfer Fund for Transfer, to account 12401000-513000, Protective Inspection Overtime, regarding the need for funds to cover the cost of overtime due to an unexpected leave of absence for one of the local inspectors.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And from the docket of April 17, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $2,483.48 from account 11351000-530115, Auditor, Auditor Services, relative to a change in the senior clerical position to an administrative clerical position to the following accounts. $483.48 to account 11351000-511000, auditing salary. $500 to 11351000-514030, auditing longevity, and then $1,500 to account 11351000-513000, auditing overtime.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That's it for, let's see here, so, that's all the business for Personnel and Human Services. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At 9:17, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Do you got anything, Jill?
Listen, O E N L, that's no business tonight.
I'd like to call the committee on council rules and procedures to order at 9:17. Sitting on this committee is Counsel Cobus, his vice chair, and Counsel Parrika. Last week, I circulated a document to both councils as well as to the full council on Article One Authority and Article Two General Rules, which had met the draft updates from the councils who attended the March 21st meeting at seven o'clock in Council Annex. And it left with many revisions. Article One and Article Two constitute 266 lines of rules. And due to the late hour, I think maybe we will not vote on that tonight. We'll wait until we have a little bit more time because it's the three of us that need to vote this out and needs to be read, not to be voted. So, it's good to tell the council they've got Article One and Article Two done to both where we're pretty much where we're feeling okay. We, as a committee, need to move on Article Three and Article Four. And I thought that we would do that on Wednesday, April 18th, until I heard you're going to be away on vacation. So, I would like you to enjoy your vacation, and I would like to reschedule instead of meeting on April 18th to instead meet on April the 25th. Does that meet your schedules?
Yes.
Very well. I'll declare a public meeting of the council rules and procedures to be held at seven o'clock in the Council Annex Room on Wednesday, April 25th. Is anyone else having a business to bring for the committee?
To discuss?
Article Three.
Just Article Three, or are you trying to do three or four?
If we have time, we'll get to four. That's going to be a one-hour meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion adjourns in order.
Second.
Thank you. Declare, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Don't forget at nine.
At 9:19.
Nine o'clock in the morning, it's Acting President Parrika until the 23rd.
Oh, have a great vacation. Great vacation.
Thank you.